We've got a room full tonight and we're excited to have everyone here. Ms. Gany, if you would do our invocation for us, please.
Let us pray. Dear Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for another opportunity to serve the students of Harnett County Schools. We ask as we meet tonight that we will be on one accord and do what's best for the interests of every student in Harnett County. This is my prayer in Jesus' name, amen.
Mr. Godfrey, if you'd lead us in the pledge.
Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Al Lintonson, motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda as read.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Chairman votes aye.
Gany, aye.
Godfrey, aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. Matthews and Ms. Thompson, if you would do your special presentations, please.
Good evening, Vice Chair Abate and members of the board. Tonight, we would like to recognize some of our leaders here in Harnett County who have devoted themselves to expanding and improving their leadership skills. So, this is kind of a culmination of the last few years and we want to recognize folks that have completed some of the professional development offered here, some at the regional level, some at the state level, and we want to recognize some that are just starting, a new PD this year. So, at this time, I will announce the names and as I call your name, you can come up and I'm going to hand, maybe Mr. White will help me hand these out, as we want to recognize you. So, the first group we're going to recognize are the NC PAPAs or the North Carolina Principals One Assistant Principals Association of Early Career Principals Academy, and this is the 23-25 group. This is a pretty big obligation and our first recipient is Ms. Amanda Moore.[1282.08][1282.08](applause) Mr. Jeffrey Booker also attended this academy but I don't believe he's here tonight.[1321.44][1321.44](applause) Our next group is the NC Papa Early Career Principals Academy and this is the 25-27 group. So, first we'd like to recognize Angel Maya.[1335.52][1335.52](applause) The next PD we want to recognize is one for new central office leadership in the 25-26 school year, leading with clarity, strategy, and influence. First, we'd like to recognize Dr. Stephen Murphy.[1393.52][1393.52](applause) The next group is the Sandhills Regional Executive Leadership Development for aspiring principals and this is the 25-26 group, Ms. Kelly Too.[1449.65][1449.65](applause)
If I take a moment personally for Mr. and Mrs. Clarida, who are longtime employees of Harnett County.[1506.15][1506.15](applause)
And I have to claim Christina Too as a former student of mine in the fourth grade. Congratulations Christina, I knew you were destined for grades. This next group we want to recognize is the Sandhills Principal Learning Series and this is the 25-26 group, Mr. Nick Wiggs.[1528.02][1528.02](applause) We have some overachievers, Ms. Daisy McDonald again.[1556.65][1556.65](laughter) (applause) And this is the Sandhills Regional Leadership Consortium for the 23-24 school year, near and dear outside of my heart, Virginia Taylor.[1580.65][1580.65](applause) And Dr. Calveter Beard, who I do not believe is here with us tonight, so congratulations to her as well.[1626.71][1626.71](applause) You know, as a former elementary principal, I said I would stand up here and be sure enough I left anyone out, come and tell me right now, I don't want you to go home without your award. But certainly, special thanks and recognition because anytime you commit to improving yourself, that's a real strength of a leader and we appreciate your commitment to doing that, not only for yourself but for the students here in Harnett County, so thank you.[1650.78][1650.78](applause)
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. We have an incredible group of administrators here throughout the county and, you know, we can't say thank you enough and thank you so much for going above and beyond to receive that extra training, we really appreciate you. Prior to asking for a motion for closed session, I just want to let everyone know we do have a hearing we're going to go into closed session for a few moments for, just bear with us and as soon as we can finish up that hearing, we'll be back out for public comments as well as the rest of our regularly scheduled meeting. So, with that said, I will entertain a motion to move into closed session.
I'd like a motion to move into closed session, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
And is that pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A1 to prevent the disclosure of confidential student records under GS 115C 402? Mr. Godfrey?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Chairman votes aye.
Gany, aye.
Godfrey, aye. Aye.
Passes unanimously, we're in closed session. Passes unanimously. We're in closed session.
After a vote in closed session, we've now reconvened into open session and we will move forward with our public comment period. As we know, our established rules, each speaker must complete the signup sheet, which you've done. Each speaker may only speak for three minutes. No balance of time may be yielded to another speaker. Maximum thirty minutes allowed for public comments. And we have the signup sheet here. So Mr. Mitchell, if you will come forward, please.
I am forward. Board members, superintendents, and all the Harney County school employees that are here, I thank you. Harney County is a beautiful county. I'm a citizen that lives in District One, and my name's Larry Mitchell. Four, seven, eight Century Drive. I live in Cameron. Lexington Plantation is my neighborhood. Harney County schools are very visible to us citizens, and we see that in our school buses that go through the county each and every day of the school year. Somebody put my picture up, please. I like to show this. I presented this in the commissioners' meeting today. This is Mr. Ozempic. This is a Doc's Road. I pick up litter as a volunteer for the county. And you notice I have a sign that says Veteran Volunteers Ahead. Those two words go together pretty good, veterans and volunteers. We volunteer for a lot of events in the county, and me, I spend about six days a week picking up litter. I spend about three, four hours a day. It's free exercise from the county. Soil and water conservation provides me all the tools I need. And I put Mr. Ozempic out because this month is Halloween, and it slows traffic down. Now, this is Doc's Road, and at seven in the morning, it is heavy traffic. And they're mostly going to Western Harney schools. The buses are really going through there heavily in the morning and the afternoon. And I must say, the school buses, as I'm picking up trash in my yellow vest, they're one of the most safest vehicles out there for me. They respect me being out there. And those are good drivers. I wish all the private vehicles did the same, but they travel very fast on that road. But with that said, this morning in the commissioners' meeting, two citizens talked about the schools. And for me, it's citizens participating in these boards. And you can notice how many citizens are here. There's probably more people at a funeral than come to these board meetings. And that's at the commissioners' meeting, and same here. But we need to instill citizenship, patriotism into our county. And I'm so happy you got a Harney County flag flying today. Thank you very much. So who does attendance in schools? I don't have a child in school. I don't have a grandchild. But is anybody as a citizen able to participate in our school board meetings? And I say yes. As taxpayers...
Three minutes goes too fast, and I have a lot more information to talk about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Longman.
Hello, my name is Alan Longman. I'm from two thirty-four Hamilton Road in Bonneville. The reason for what I want to talk to you about is that I've talked to my grandchildren here in this county. And I see what they're learning, and I don't understand how this is going to help them too much in the future, since the future is going to be changing so drastically. I think we have to get away from teaching memorization and teach them how to understand mathematics, what it means, what everything else means, not so much the memorization. Because I think that's going to be done by computers and other tools which they should be able to use for their benefit to get things done. It's going to be important for them to be independent more, be more able to take the front lead, to be leaders. Otherwise, there's not going to be any jobs for them if they're going to be going there and working for some boss or something that really doesn't need them anymore. They need to have self-worth. I don't see that being taught here because you're teaching the old methods for a way that's going to be gone in ten years. So I'm just saying to everyone here, the teaching profession is a licensed business. It is a licensed thing. It is a field of study with responsibility to the people. You have to teach them critical thinking. You have to teach them to believe in themselves and empower them because they have to be empowered in the future, otherwise the future is not going to be there for them. It's a different approach to what you're teaching now, and I think they would so far be harmed. Other countries are trying to pick up this pace. It's going to be hard to do. It's a new learning situation that everyone has to get used to. We need younger people in technology going to explain to everybody what the jobs are going to be in the future because we don't know ourselves because our experience doesn't show anything compared to what's going to be very soon. And the children who are going to come out of school, they're going to be frustrated because they're not going to be able to have self-value, not going to be able to compete with what's out there. And therefore, they're going to have to learn a different way of being than has been taught before. They have to be the masters. They have to be empowered. They have to believe in themselves. And they have to have things in their mind, creativity, to what they want to accomplish, and utilize those very things, AI, robotics, and other things, computers, for their advantage so they can use them as a tool instead of the tool using them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longman. And finally, Mr. Spears.
Hello, everybody. I followed these two guys earlier this morning, and he left me twenty-two seconds. Oh, y'all didn't let me use them. I came in today, one reason, last meeting I missed. And I looked at it, and before I spoke, I told you, Mr. Godfrey, that your prayer changed the way I felt that time. But the last time you did prayer, and then you did a moment for Charlie Kirk, a moment of silence. That kind of rubbed me a little way, but we won't get into that. We'll talk offline on that one. And as he was talking about the flags, I noticed the Harney County flag. I'm learning that a lot of people want to talk about flags, God, country, and family. But your stuff doesn't line up with what I was told. Now, Harney County taught me. I'm an advocate, and I'm here on what I was told. Yes, sir. No, sir. Thank you, and everything else. So there's just so much that I've gone through, even working with the Board of Elections. And when you all talked about getting out of the schools, and I wanted to say, well, why not just use all the Western Harney gem before you go trying to find two other places? But when you got together and talk about somebody is probably going to shoot it up, and you blame it on the kids. Everything has been put on the kids because growing up, I never understood why at the high school level there was a smoking pit. We were not even old enough to really be talking about a smoking pit. So I had to steal Granddaddy's Camel, no filter, and take it to school so I can sneak out and see what goes on in the smoking pit. It don't make any sense. So there's a lot of things we turn around and say that we're saving the kids and helping the kids, but we're hurting them. Television does it all the time. Growing up, to get a little candy cigarette, get that little puff off of it, and then chew the gum. So there's just things that, like he was talking about, we need to teach them. I wasted three years of French when I should have been taking Spanish. Because I go and sit in the courtroom, and I heard them say, "Me know English, me know English." And the judge finally looked at him and said, "Do you know jail?" So that cut out having the translators all the time, but I went there and saw that they was up in another part of the courtroom, and it seemed like it was just his Spanx or whatever. We're constantly being divided. And I just don't know what we need to do to try to pull all this stuff back together. I think we're too far gone, but at the end of the day, somebody's still going to be standing. And I pray that it's me and the rest of you all too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spears, and thank you, gentlemen, for coming in and speaking to us. We'll now move on to our superintendent update. Mr. Matthews.
Vice Chairman Abate, members of the board, while there are many exciting things taking place in our school system, I want to just share a few highlights since my last update to you. And we'll allow our other cabinet members to elaborate on most of our initiatives tonight. The school system's senior leadership conducted interviews for the principal positions at Anderson Creek Primary School and Highland Middle School, where we currently have interim principals in place. Finalists were identified for each position, and these individuals will be recommended for a final interview with you and the local advisory boards of the particular schools at our scheduled work session on October the twentieth. Senior leadership also began holding individual conferences with building principals on September twenty-sixth to discuss each school's student achievement results from last school year since they have recently been released, review their goals for this school year, and discuss ways that central office personnel could support them in achieving their goals. Those meetings continued last week with the remaining conferences scheduled to be completed tomorrow. From my perspective, the conversations have been very informative and helped us all to be on the same page with regard to our focus on quality instruction and improved student achievement at each of our sites. I also met with Dr. Lisa Chapman, President of Central Carolina Community College and Lee County Schools Superintendent Chris Dossenbuck last week to discuss our cooperation and collaboration of the many programs that we share to meet the needs of our students in their transition to higher education and the workforce. We're blessed to have a good working relationship with CCCC, and I believe our students are the benefactors of that relationship. I was also able to attend the groundbreaking ceremony last Thursday morning with Mr. Abate for the home that is being built in honor of Harney County Sheriff's Deputy Chris Johnson. As you probably remember, Deputy Johnson was a resource officer for us and served at Highland Middle School and was tragically killed in an automobile accident on his way home from school in February of two thousand twenty-four. This home is being built by New Home Incorporated in conjunction with the North Carolina Home Builders Association Charitable Foundation as their first home in their Builders Honor First Responders Program. This will be part of their very successful program to build new homes for veterans that they've been sponsoring since the late two thousands. All of the materials and workmanship will be donated with the home being sold, and a hundred percent of the proceeds go into Deputy Johnson's widow and her family. It was a very touching ceremony, and I was privileged to be able to attend along with Mr. Abate to represent our school system and our county. Last, but certainly not least, I understand that today is Board Member Hare's birthday. Happy birthday, Mr. Hare. I'd like to take this opportunity to celebrate him and wish him a happy birthday. And with that, Mr. Vice Chair, unless there's some specific questions for me, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Are there any questions? All right. Thank you so much. Auxiliary services update. Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Vice Chair Abate, members of the board. Give you an update on what's kind of been, I know something you guys had a few questions about with our bus GPS system. Those installs are pretty much complete. We have about a half a school that will be complete tomorrow. And then we'll be running some tests on that system over the next few days. Our goal is that system will be live to parents no later than October twentieth. And so this is the one that provides the app to parents for, you know, what we've called Here Comes the Bus or other things in the past. So again, we should in the next ten days or so have that live and available, and we'll do a big, you know, public push to make sure folks know that that is out there right before we hit the time change when it's a little darker and a little colder. So that'll be good timing on that. Also, on the transportation front, our additional mini-buses that you all approved purchasing have arrived. And we are getting the plates on those, and they will be get out to schools here very soon. This will put a mini-bus at all of our high schools to be used in the attendance area and across athletics and CTE and a number of our other organizations. These have been very, very popular and very well-used, and the schools are excited to have them. So we appreciate your support in getting those. Participation numbers for our free reduced lunch continue to increase. We expected that to happen as the year went on, and more and more students, you know, kind of the fatigue of packing the lunch maybe wears a little. So we've continued to see that increase, and overwhelmingly, nothing but positive comments from going all CEP schools. And so we're very pleased to be able to offer that to our families and glad they're taking advantage of it. Schools are working through kind of their fall safety updates, and one of the biggest things they're doing now is their fall lockdown drills. We do two lockdown drills a year in coordination with law enforcement, and so those have, some have taken place already. Some will be taking place over the next few weeks, and they'll be updating their safety plans. I do want to share that a couple of years ago, we rolled out what was called the Rave Mobile Panic Button. And it was an app on the phone for all of our staff to be able to initiate medical emergencies, lockdowns, and whatnot from their cellphone. We did have that used last week at one of our schools for a medical emergency. And it was amazing how quickly the response was. The principal was thrilled. She was immediately able to know where to go in the school. In the same time, she was being notified, myself, and the sheriff's office was being notified, to be able to get medical assistance out as quickly as possible. So very pleased that that app is out there and being used effectively. And then finally, for me, believe it or not, it is time to form the Calendar Committee for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So we have the Calendar Committee meeting set up for October twenty-first at ten a.m. Would invite any of you who would like to be a part of that to join us. I'll have Ms. Creas send an invite out to you tomorrow. Again, we'll get together. We'll do a couple of drafts. Our goal would be to come to you in November with a couple of options that we've narrowed it down to. Traditionally, we survey the public, and so we'll try to do that November meeting, have you all approve some drafts, conduct the survey, to come back hopefully at December meeting with the results of that survey and adopt the calendar in the December meeting for next school year already. Unless you have questions for me, that concludes my update.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Me and Ms. Ganey received our invites already.
Very good.
And I'll be there. Are there any other questions for Mr. Pearson? All right. Thank you so much. Curriculum and instruction update. Ms. Ferguson.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Abate and Board members. Tonight, I bring to you our Harney County Schools twenty-four, twenty-five accountability update. I think Ms. Burt's going to put it on for us. And just like in the years past, the student achievement data for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year are based on analysis of all end-of-grade and end-of-course tests, which are aligned to the North Carolina Standard Course of Study in English Language Arts, Reading, and Math, and the Essential Standards in Science for all public schools in North Carolina. The data provides the percentage of students who scored at a Level Three, that's considered grade-level proficient and above, and at each academic achievement level. Remember, this year, our science assessments, new standards were adopted in twenty twenty-three into the summer of twenty twenty-three. So it required the development of new tests. They cut off a year with that process, if you remember, and we took the test this year. So our new science test for end-of-grade, fifth and eighth, and end-of-course biology, they were implemented this year. They approved the cut scores for this year. They are in our data, but they can't be compared to the previous test. I just put some quotes in there. Superintendent Maurice Greens, he shared that he was proud of our students and educators who have worked hard to improve these metrics. Even as we acknowledge that our students are more than test scores, while the progress and growth shown in this report deserves praise, we must continue our work to promote excellence for all students. Mr. Brooks Matthews, our superintendent, shared, while we recognize there is still work ahead, this marks a very positive step for student achievement. Our students and educators are showing meaningful progress, and we're encouraged by these results. So tonight, I'm pleased to share an overview of Harney County Schools' district academic progress based on test results for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Over the past four years, we have navigated many... Over the four, past four years, we have navigated many challenges from remote learning to the return of face-to-face instruction. Our latest results demonstrate what we all knew during this challenges. Harriet County Schools is not a low performing district. We agree with Superintendent Green and Superintendent Matthews that there is still work to do, but we do celebrate the gains made by our students, teachers and leaders. So here we go. We've got the Harriet County and state trends and we always look at those first to see how we are aligning with the state. So North Carolina scored higher in 12 of the 15 math and reading assessments with only third grade reading, English two and NC math trailing the 23, 24 results. In Harriet County, we also scored higher in 12 of the 15 math and reading. We saw a decrease in third grade, math grade eight and NC math one. So we did not have the decrease in English two. The average composite score for 11th graders taking the ACT, a college readiness test, rebound, rebounded to 18.2, uh, for the state. Harriet County, our average composite is 16.9. Um, but when we looked at the UNC admission requirement of a composite score of 17 and we went back to the state, went back to that, we increased from 31.9 to 45.4, uh, percent of our students meeting that cutoff. North Carolina students scored higher, oh, excuse me, my, mine did not move because of my finger, I apologize. Harriet County Schools and state trends in North Carolina, the four-year cohort graduation rate has risen to 87.7. That's the highest for the state in 10 years. The four-year cohort graduation for Harriet County is 89.4%. We are higher than the state level. Fewer schools were designated as low performing and seven districts in the state came out of low performing status. In Harriet County, also fewer schools were designated as low performing in Harriet County. Six of our schools exceeded growth this year and Harriet County was one of the seven districts to come out of low performing status. In the state, students saw, across the state, students saw slight increases in most reading test areas, but experienced declines in fourth and seventh grade reading. Harriet County still, students in grades three through eight, they continue to make steady grant, gains in reading and math performance. Students achieving grade level proficiency in reading increased in all grades four through seven. Fourth and seventh saw the most significant increase with a six and an 8.5 percentage increase in math. Overall, math and reading saw gains in grades three through eight with a 2.9 increase in reading proficiency and a 4.3 increase in math proficiency overall. Across the state, the English language learners saw gains. The percentage of students meeting progress targets or exiting English language learner status has steadily increased over the past three years. And if you remember, this is a number in Harriet County that has increased a lot for us. The data this year was very positive. Harriet County also had gains with its EL students. We tested, we tested 1,897 students. Those making progress increased from 19.5% in 23, 24 to 25.5% in 24, 25. EL students meeting annual progress increased from 16.8 to 18.3%. Students meeting the exit criteria increased by 2.2%. While students in grades five and eight also take science assessments and high school students take biology assessments, remember there were new tests aligned to the new content standards in science and biology. These were implemented in 24, 25, so we can't compare them to the previous years. What we can look at is our school performance grades, um, is that in our science fifth grade, we saw less than a one percentage point decline. That is, for those of you who have been through test realignment, um, that is huge. So a shout out there. And a five percentage decrease in biology scores. Now our eighth graders did see a larger decrease of 11.4%, but that was in line with the state's decrease of 10%. So we did, uh, well for our first year in our science test. Overall, district-wide proficiency improved from 42.6% in 2024 to 44.2% in 2025, an increase of 1.6%. While this might seem modest, it reflects a steady recovery and is above the state's increase of 0.8%. So we had double the increase that what the state had this year. We can look at the importance of this increase in a broader context. The slight increase doesn't fully reflect improvements we might see in subgroups or at specific sites and you're getting ready to see, um, where some of our sites really performed. We continue to be transparent with our progress and we careful, carefully analyze all data and work to support our schools, teachers and parents. Even a small improvement indicates progress in the right direction and we remain committed to continued improvement. So when we look at Harriet County and our region trends, we are part of the Sandhills region, there are 13 schools in our region. They, this is going to be online for those of you who want to go back and look at it closely, there'll also be links for you also. But I thought it was important to look at our Sandhills region. There's 13, so in the middle of that, you know, seven, six above, six below. Um, when we look at our EOCs in high school and we look at biology, we're a little bit, we're in the lower part, the lower third of the group. Uh, you can see in, um, English two to the right over here, I wish this had a pointer on it. English two to, to the right, we're actually above the middle. And then with our math one, we are in the, near the middle and math three, we're at the bottom of the region, but we've still made progress. Now, um, math three, across the state, we saw some declines, but again, that's where we fall within our region and we like to compare to our region a lot of times because of the, the demographics, the school size, things that are more similar to us. When we look at the ACT and the ACT work keys, you can see we're in the upper third there in the region. When we go to the EOG, reading grade five and reading third is to the right, fourth is the bottom left and fifth is the bottom right. You can see for most of those, we're very close to the middle. And then we also have our reading six, eight. Sixth grade is to the right. We're in the lower third there. Uh, we're right in the middle for seventh grade reading and then right in the middle for eighth grade reading. When we look at math through the three through five, I just tell you to follow the green line for our region, we're right in the middle of our region for, um, basically for third, fourth and fifth. And for sixth, seventh and eighth, again, we're right in the middle and you'll see some of our schools had great gains in math. We had some schools that had as much as 12 and 13% gain proficiency. Now in the science, even though it's new to us, we held our own there also in the region. In the, uh, fifth grade, we were about number eight and then in the eighth grade science, we were right in the middle. Now, um, when we also look at our proficiency, as I shared, the composite is up 44.2%. It's up 1.6%. Currently we're 10.8% below the state proficiency, but when I look at the green, this is all the areas where proficiency grew. And the white is science, so very few areas where we did not have a growth in proficiency. To summarize this, and again, this is on, and you have a copy of this printed in front of you. Um, this is also on our website. 53.8% of Harriet County Schools met or exceeded growth. Six of the 26 exceeded, eight of the 26 met, 12 of the 26 did not meet. When I break it down by elementary, seven of the 14 met or exceeded growth. Five of six of our, um, uh, middle schools met or exceeded and two of six of our high schools met or exceeded growth. We did not count HVA in this numbers because HVA, uh, students were fluid, it changed throughout the year and last year it was six. 12 was just only a few elementary. This is the one that I would encourage you to look at also is the green. When we do it by school, the proficiency growth is highlighted in green and 18 of our 26 schools, which is 69.2% have increased proficiency. So almost 70% of our schools have increased proficiency. When we take a deeper dive into our subgroup data, when we look at our economically disadvantaged, uh, these are the areas that we made gains in. Fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth grade reading, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh grade math, NC math three and English two. Our Hispanic students, they showed gains in fourth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade reading, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh grade math and NC math three. Black students showed gains in fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade reading, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh grade math, fifth grade science, NC math one, NC math three and English two. Students with disabilities showed gains in third, fourth, seventh, eighth grade reading, third, fourth, seventh and eighth grade math, science grade five and NC math three. On, at the NC Department of Public Education Accountability Page, there is a link and there's a spreadsheet and you can go in there and do this by school, by district, by subject, by student. But these are the highlights for all of our, um, subgroups. Now additional state data that we're very proud of, um, in our CTE, our workforce field preparing students to, um, leave high school and go to work. Industry recognized credentials increased from 9,470 in 23, 24 to 11,345 in 24, 25. Attainment rate increased from 685 to 805 and this is the percent of credentials earned out of credentials offered in Harriet County Schools. Proficiency rate on state assessments went from 76% to 80%. The total number of concentrators increased from 688 in 23, 24 to 729, uh, in 24, 25. And as you know, our CTE concentrators increase our graduation rates and increase our, um, ACT work keys participation. Now this is how our school performance grades are calculated. School achievement is 80%. I put this example in the box and then, um, growth is 20%. Here's the school performance grades, A, B, C, D and F. And there's the link to the accountability framework if you want to look at that. Now as we go by schools, I'm going to be very quick tonight on schools because each school is presenting to you at the board. Um, you've already met with some of them and you have some at the next work session. But I do want to point out, if you see the, um, green down the left-hand corner, that means that school has had a positive trend across that chart. So while Andrew Elementary is certainly not where we want them, um, they are in a positive trend. If you went, looked at last year's achievement, um, or last year's performance from 34 to 41, that's seven point gain right there. Ben Haven Elementary, they are a C school and their overall, um, performance is a 62. Boone Trail, there you see a green trend. They're positive across the bottom numbers. And their achievement, for example, their achievement went from 36.7 to 41.4 and their overall performance from a 41 to a 45. And we always look at that growth. We want the EVOs growth to be, um, two to, um, to a negative two. So the year before was 5.94 and they're down to a minus 3.93. Not where we want them, but a huge improvement. Bush Creek Elementary, they had a performance of 54 this year. I put a star by that because a star means they're one point away from a C. Um, in their overall performance. Coates Elementary. They stayed about the same. They did come down a little bit in their performance, but we know that last year was huge transition year for them and we look forward to what they will do this year. Coates Irwin Middle, if you will notice their performance from 39 to a 48. And if you look at their, the little gold star by their growth, they almost exceeded growth. They were at 81.9. And their positive trend, you can see the green arrows. Dunn Elementary, again, a positive trend. And when you really dig into her numbers, you will see that she is closing the gap, especially when you compare the students at Dunn Elementary to the students at Dunn Middle. There was a 3% difference last year in their, um, achievement. This year it's a 2%, so they're definitely closing the gap. And she brought her growth from a negative 4.76 to a negative 2.85 and a six-point gain in school performance. Dunn Middle, as you know, is one of our schools that exceeded growth at 99.7 and a positive growth index of 9.84. Positive trend across the board. Irwin Elementary, we do have some growth that we're going to look at there as well as proficiency and we have supports and plans in place and for them. Harriet Central High School, they are about the same as last year. Their growth is a little bit more in the negative from 4.99 to a negative 5.03. Um, but across the board, their numbers are very similar. And again, for everything that I show you where there's an opportunity for growth, we already have people working with their coach and with their principal and with their PLCs, um, targeting data. Harriet Central Middle, you can see a positive, uh, trend there with the green. That means she's a positive across the board there and she grew from 42 to 45 and closed in her growth from a negative 4.02 to a negative 2.6. Harriet County Early College is another one of our high performers. Again, the green indicates a positive trend across the board and a growth of 6.18, which is tremendous and we're very proud of. Harriet Virtual Academy, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on them because we're going to have to dig in that, look at it differently, but last year this was a very small group of students that was tested. It'll look different this year. Highland Elementary, again, look at the green, the positive trend. And, um, she's across the board positive. Highland Middle, another gold star there. Um, again, 53, 55 would have brought them to a C, but a positive trend, um, in the achievement and the growth, no, the achievement, excuse me. Johnsonville Elementary, they are a C school. They are not considered low performing. Lafayette Elementary, they, um, took their performance from a 53 to a 61, from a D to a C. So they, um, they did a great job this year and they also have the green positive trend. Lillington Shawtown Elementary, while they are considered a low performing school, I want to, um, note the positive green trend across the chart. She's at a 50 and remember a 55 would be a C. And her achievement went from a 40 to a 45.4, so 5.4 increase. Northwest Elementary, this is again, another one that had great performance this year. They are now a B school. She went from a 66 to a 73. Her growth was, index was a minus 1.54. She's now on the positive side of that with a 3.47. Overheals Elementary, they are a C school and not low performing. Overheals High School, theirs is very much across the board. There's little tiny, like a point one increases. But they're not low performing. Overheals Middle exceeded growth with a 90.9. They are not low performing because they exceeded growth and if you notice that star, they're at a 53, very close to 55. South Harriet Elementary, see that star again, they're at 54 and a positive trend and they also exceeded growth. So, um, they are not considered low performing. Star Academy is the alternative model. They are not, they do not follow- They are not, they do not follow the same performance model that we follow for the other schools. They are either progressing, maintaining, declining, and we are working with them on the declining, and it may be, it may be something that's linked to sustainability of the students, not necessarily test scores, so we are diving into that. Triton High School was one of our schools that exceeded growth, positive trend across the board. Western Hornet High School had a positive trend across the board. They did have a minus seven point eleven growth index and brought that down to a negative five point zero-four. And they did grow their performance from a fifty-five to a fifty-nine. And then finally, Western Hornet Middle School. If you notice, I put a star there because they did not, they're low-performing, but they're in the fifties, fifty-two, I believe, and they will be very close to being a C as well with a little bit of growth. I went through the schools very quickly because they're going to present to you, and also, this will be on the website for you to look at. Now, our needs have improved. We've seen improved attendance, approve, approve, improvement in the discipline. And as far as personnel, you're going to see some great numbers there as well. Very quickly, this is our school attendance. If you noticed, when we started really looking at our school attendance, we, before COVID, we were at ninety-four point six. We had the all-time low of eighty-six point one coming out. We're now up to ninety-two point three-two percent, six percent increase there, and it continues to improve. I highlight in red for you our teacher retention data because this is huge for the success of our classroom, is to retain those teachers. We had a twenty point one-four percent retention. In the past two years, we've gotten that down to a thirteen point four-three percent. I've included the discipline data for you to look at as we continue to focus on that. But those numbers have also improved in the total number of long-term suspensions and the total number of IOSS. Our mental health data, our referrals are about the same as they were last year. But as you know, we have a strong program there to address it in Hazel Health at our schools, so we know this is making a difference as well. Exceptional Children's Data, I've included the numbers, so when you look at our data, you will see that those numbers continue to increase. So for our subgroups to make the gains that they made, that's very positive. Same thing for our English language learners. When you look at those numbers and watch the growth over the past couple of years, and the subgroups did well. I've included our in-class data. This is our K-two literacy assessment. We see positive trends there. Although more kindergartners entered school needing additional supports beyond core instruction in the beginning of the year, last year, a larger percentage had decreased in risk by the end, when you compare that. Also, we had a larger percentage of kindergartners that knew their letter names and sounds and were decoding words in twenty-four, twenty-five. And in K-two, a larger percentage of students decreased in reading risk from the beginning of the year to the end of the year in twenty-four, twenty-five compared to twenty-three, twenty-four. So when you look at this data, we continue to strengthen our foundational reading skills, and we let that continue to be a focus in our K-two classrooms. I've included our iReady data for math. This is last year's data showing the number of students on grade level at beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year, and this is all students three through eight. This is our BOG to EOG growth on the left-hand side, and there's huge growth when you look at those numbers. And then I wanted to put in here our BOG compared, last year compared to this year's BOG. For example, Andrew Elementary was at six point nine-five, their BOG, last year. This is beginning of third-grade test. This year it's at twelve percent. They doubled that. Look at Bush Creek, they were at four point two percent. This year they're at twenty-two point five percent. So we're seeing huge increases in our BOG scores. Now, there's a lot of measurements that are not up here tonight, but I want you just to remember, we have advanced placement enrollment, our AP numbers continue to go up. Our CTE numbers and our, continue to go up in a positive trend with performance. Our CCP classes, as far as the number of students who take advantage of those classes and pass those classes, continue to increase. We continue to grow our robotics, our fine arts, athletics, our junior ROTC, and our academically gifted numbers have grown. That was a lot in a short amount of time. I did not go into great detail because the schools are presenting their concerns and their growth with you individually. Do you have any questions tonight? I also made you handouts that you can look at. It compares the schools. If you like these handouts, we will have them printed on a better-quality paper and have them so that you can share with our community, and we'll have them at schools for parents to pick up, things like that. But I wanted you to look at these first. The red hand card infographic sums up everything I just said.
Ms. Ferguson, did you say the comparisons to our regional will be, or region will be posted to our website?
They're on here, and they'll be on the, this whole slideshow will be on there, so you can see it. So it will be posted. And I, and if you will notice the green and the gold stars that I had throughout the presentation, I feel like I can sit here with you and tell you that we're no longer a low-performing district. But next year, I know that we will cut our number of low-performing schools at the minimum in half because of the trending data and the things that the principals and their instructional coaches and the teachers are doing. Every year that we can have a more experienced teacher in that classroom is another opportunity for us to grow. So we're in a very positive trend.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I just have, Mr. Chairman, I just have a concern about, two or three of the schools up there, I noticed have a constant grade of D, 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 D. You know, don't, I mean, I understand every one of them have a little bit of positive growth in everything.
Yes, sir.
But when you go like four years, and you stay at the same grade for four years, that's a little bit troubling, isn't it?
Yes, sir, and the grade is actually a span, so it's from forty to fifty-four. There's a fifteen-point span there. So they may be improving and still a D. So I know it's not the approving, the rate of approval we want, or improvement that we want. We want a faster rate of improvement, but just remember, like, they could be a forty this year, a forty-five the next year, a fifty the next year, a fifty-three the next year. So they are improving in proficiency, so that's what I would look at. If, when you look down that proficiency and see if that proficiency is increasing. And you should see a three to five percent at least, at the minimum, every year.
I hope to see them this time get up to that fifty-five, so we'll have.
Yes, and we have so many schools that are right there at it. I agree. I absolutely believe it's doable. And I just, this, this past year, we had a short amount of time, made a huge amount of difference, and I believe the things that, that all of you as leaders, and Mr. Matthews as a leader, has put in place, that our principals are up to the challenge, and they are just rock stars.
Ms. Ferguson, I, the Virtual Academy.
Yes.
What's our enrollment with that right now?
I will defer that to Mr. White.
We are over one hundred and fifteen students now at the Virtual Academy.
Okay. Is there any, so our, our achievement went down, our growth index went down, and ultimately, our letter grade went down at the Virtual Academy. And I think something we, we learned from COVID was students tend to do better in that, in the classroom setting, face-to-face. You know, is there, would we be benefiting to bring those students back in? Or are these students that ultimately, for whatever reason, are benefiting from being in that virtual setting as far as health concerns or what have you?
So the, there are a couple of things to look at with the Virtual Academy and kind of coming into this year and making a reassessment as far as what we need to look at and try to change just a little bit to see if we can kind of do some things a bit different with regards to how we handle that. One is, we're doing a lot more in-person instruction in the sense of, we have our own teachers, Hornet County Schools' teachers, that are working with those students. In previous years, they were on a platform.
Okay.
And getting their learning synchronously and asynchronously. But this year, those students are with Hornet County Schools' teachers. They're, the learning is synchronous in some spaces and asynchronous as well. But the difference is, these students have an opportunity to reach out to our teachers and make connections, and there's specific office hours that are set up to be able to support those kids. I think when you talk about virtual instruction, you have to kind of look at it from multiple lenses there. There are students who need virtual instruction because of medical issues or whatever. There are some families who are just comfortable with their students not being in our schools and using virtual learning as an opportunity for them to be able to grow. So what we've tried to do this year is really take a deep dive into figuring out who those students are that benefit from learning at the Virtual Academy, and who those students are that may benefit from a more concentrated environment, meaning Star Academy, where we are able to be able to offer some virtual opportunities for students as well. And so what we think we have going into this school year is a great plan. In those principal conversations, this past week when we sat down with Ms. Young and spoke to Ms. Young, we were very adamant about taking a deep dive into the data there at the Virtual Academy to be able to see how we can assess the best way to move forward with the students that we currently have enrolled. I mean, one thing you find from those parents that are advocating for their students to be in virtual is that you have anxiety issues, but you just also have that comfortability of being able to know that I can watch and grow with my student. And so, as Ms. Ferguson alluded to earlier, we had some elementary school students there at the Virtual Academy last year. We have some elementary students there this year. We are in a K-12 situation, but again, the difference is with those elementary kids, they have a teacher that is there that is working with them every morning on different skills and in those sorts of things, and as you get into 612, we have the same sort of thing. And so what we're hoping is that we'll see some gains this year in performance because of the fact that we went to utilizing our own teachers versus having a platform that they, that they're utilizing. And also, we expanded some of the course offerings there with the help of Mrs. Ferguson, her team on the CTE side. We've got CTE teacher available for our students to kind of span some, to, to kind of expand some elective-type things. And so as we make that environment a bit more rich, I think what we have the opportunity to be able to do is to grow tremendously this school year and what we've done in previous years just because of the consistency that'll be there with our own teachers. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say, I'm a firm believer in face-to-face education.
Yes, sir.
I don't like virtual. I mean, I understand the medical part of it, but then I think about when COVID came and people got used to working from home, and then when they had the companies decided, "Look, you're going to have to come back to work. COVID is no more." Then they, a lot of freaked out. "Oh, I got to go back into the office," you know? And I, I wouldn't want something like this, to see this happening, you know, as far as our schools are concerned. Because face-to-face, you can't say that it's not the best as far as education is concerned.
Yes, sir. And I'm, I'm confident with, you know, Irwin Elementary, going down by one point seven in achievement, negative fourteen, or going down fourteen point four in growth, going down four in performance, and then minus four point four-seven in growth index, as well as Western Middle going down two point four in achievement, down twelve point two in growth, down four in performance, and down three point seven-nine in growth index. But we are, you know, sending extra resources to those locations to ensure we're, we're doing everything we can to stabilize and build.
Yes, sir. We have been, we have met with principals. We are doing walkthroughs. We have met, we have instructional coaches in the buildings that we work with. Now, the growth, I would not look at it as much this year because of the science impact on it. We're, that, we're not sure about that. I'd look more at the proficiency, and that's where we're digging into is that third graders, how many are on grade level, fourth, how many's on grade level? And we are digging into that. And I think two of the biggest gains we've got this year is an additional math coach at the district level that goes out to the schools.
Right.
And we have two in elementary to cover sixteen schools, and we have two in middle school. And the schools that they have been able to work with, and they have been receptive of them, we have seen huge gains. Like, I can name a fourth and fifth-grade school right now where their fourth and fifth grade had twelve and thirteen percent growth in math. And so we are going to have those resources available for them to use and to take advantage of.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Ms. Ferguson?
Mr. White, enroll, attendance at the Virtual Academy, is that pretty much averaged out as in the face-to-face classes?
Yeah, and so it really depends on how you count it, right? And so what we did, what we took a deep dive into doing in the spring and going into the summer is looking at what districts around us have done in that space. Because the way that virtual instruction works in a lot of spaces is that, I'll give you an example, Score Academy in Wake County, right? Score Academy, the way that they look at attendance is a hundred percent model. If a kid attends Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, that's eighty percent of the week, and so therefore, they count that as, as their attendance for the week, right? If they're not there on Friday or something along those lines. What we try to do is look at traditional attendance, the way that we count it in our traditional schools, and apply that to the virtual setting as best we can, with the understanding that there are students who are there that have severe medical issues in some spaces. There are students there who have some, some disabilities that may prevent them from being able to be there every day and taking those things into consideration. And so we are trying to level that out to make it make sense, to where we're not, of course, giving anybody anything, but also making it work for the students we need to make it work for. Virtual Academy is a fit, it's not a fix, and so therefore, I look at it the same way I look at Early College and some of the other alternative programming that we have. Some of the students that may be in the Virtual Academy probably don't need to be in that space. They need to be somewhere else. And so we've made, we've made the move in the last month or so to be able to say to those families, if your child needs some additional assistance or needs something different, they've got attendance challenges or whatever, let's look at a different space to be able to put them in and not necessarily this space. Does that make sense? And so we're, we're working through those things first semester. I'm hoping it'll be better second semester, and then going into twenty-six, twenty-seven. Should it please the board for us to continue with the Virtual Academy, then we'll hopefully have that theme licked to where I can have a better answer for that on the attendance side.
Thank you again, Ms. Ferguson. Human Resources Update, Monica Thompson.
Vice Chairman Abate and members of the board, this evening to update you on our vacancy report. Still have good news to share there. We only have six classroom vacancies, and I always want to point out that just because there's a vacancy, it doesn't mean there's not a teacher in there. There could be a teacher there waiting, that they'll be finished like at the end of the month, while, and there may be a replacement found. There may be a vacancy, but it doesn't always mean there's a vacancy there. So there's six classroom openings, six enhancement counselor CT openings, and only four EC vacancies, which I'm very proud of. We have thirty-five classified vacancies, but I will tell you, last year at this time, it was thirty-nine, and the year before it was at fifty. So that's very promising that we are closing this number down some. I'm proud of that, and I'm proud of the work that my staff, along with the principals, has put in to make that happen. We did, we have finished up, we worked closely with Mr. Pearson and his group on the transportation meetings, and we've just finished those. And the primary concern continues to be the need for sub-drivers or our newly-called flex drivers. We've implemented a flex calendar for each attendance area, so that's easy for folks to look for their available drivers. We currently have twenty-seven flex drivers across the district. Most of them drive daily. There's been positive feedback on this, and we hope to continue to build that flex pool over the next year. The next bus class began today with forty employees, and a quick overview on that, you know, we pushed really hard to get. And, and a quick overview on that, you know, we pushed really hard to get 50 in the class and, and, but we backed off of that because what happens is they can't, uh, that, we can't train enough on the individual training for them to, for their, uh, probationary, kind of their window to get their license, it runs out. So we've had it back to 40 so they can all be trained and qualify for their license. It, it really cuts down on that because we only have one trainer. And as you remember, we train two drivers a week. And I always want to keep that at the forefront because everybody thinks we have a driver shortage. We have a training shortage, just so you can remember that. Teacher evaluation work is underway. And I mean, you know, sometimes you say you need a drum roll. I know Ms. Taylor is equally proud of this, but I mean, I feel like we need a marching band to celebrate this. So we compiled the reports throughout the district last week on Friday, and there were only 20 outstanding observations to complete all over this district. That is significant because some of those are folks on leave, absence, or, you know, they may be on a maternity leave, they may be sick. Out of five 190 observations, that's, we only have 20 more to complete. That is like the biggest news ever. The principals have done a phenomenal job. Ms. Taylor has done a phenomenal job helping to encourage that and keeping up with that data for our school, uh, our schools and our principals. And so we're very proud of them. And I have to say their names out loud because this means a lot to our principals. So hold on, I'm gonna be really fast, but I have to say them. 100% completion. Ben Haven, Buys Creek, Dunn Elementary, Dunn Middle, Harney Central High School, HBA or the Star, Lillington, um, Lillington, Shawtown, Lafayette, North Harney Primary, Northwest Elementary, Overhills Elementary, South Harney, Western Harney Middle School, and the Early College. So that's 100% completers, theirs are all complete. 90 to 99% completion rate. Anderson Creek, Andrew, Boone Trail, Coates Irwin, I mean, Coates Elementary, Irwin, Harney Central Middle, Highland Elementary, Highland Middle, Johnsonville, Overhills High, Overhills Middle, Triton, and Western Harney High School. That is very significant work by our principals. And so I just want to praise them. And what that really means at the real level is they're getting in classrooms, seeing teachers, and giving feedback on instruction on a regular basis, which is what it takes to move instruction. So we're very proud of that. This week, we sent out the 25-year, well, just today, because it's just Monday. So today, we sent out the 25-year invite and we will celebrate our, uh, staff members who have 25 years in at the next board meeting in November. You know, we've kind of, we had so many last year, we had to have a separate event. But I think we're back to being able to have our typical reception here and honor them here in this room during the board meeting next week. Cheryl Fuller presented an evaluation instrument to the assistant principals last Friday. The engagement of the APs was commendable and we know that our principals are better prepared for their evaluations based on the training of the instrument. So if you remember, we trained principals, we've trained teachers, we've trained APs, we've trained everybody on administering that evaluation instrument more effectively. And that work shows in the work our principals have just done. Our Advanced Leadership Institute for Sep- September was very successful. We have 10 APs participating and this month's feedback, I mean, this month's focus was feedback. We are continuing with our leadership loop each Monday. If you have folks at your house that listen to the, uh, loop, you might hear it at your home as well. But we, uh, have, because we have a leadership and an HR loop, and so both of those are recorded ways that we're getting out information. The R and R team sponsored a paid advertisement, or the district sponsored, and they sponsored the work behind it. A paid, uh, advertising campaign on Indeed for teacher assistant and bus driver positions that's attracted 56 applicants. Of those, 33 led to screening interviews by the team. Many of those were recommended to the principals. We screened them and then once we feel like they are eligible, we push them out to the principals. And so 10 of those votes have been recommended for employment and onboarding. And we are planning another TA event because that continues to be a n- a need for our principals. And so that's our best avenue of advertising right now. So we plan to have another one in the upcoming weeks. We had a sub- a substitute information session on September 22nd. We had eight people, 18 people to attend. Connie Lavorce is reaching out to applicants to make sure their documents are all uploaded and their application is processing. We do have a pretty robust review process for subs. They have to meet a lot of criteria, so that's great. The R and R sent out care packages in the mail to our growing greatness students in college. You know, we do this in an effort to stay engaged with them while, so they don't forget us at college and know they want to come back here to teach with us. We are starting a new branch of our growing gre- greatness program with North Harney Primary. Our plan is to try to start, uh, we learned about this last year at COSPA, about a tutoring program. So we're, we're kind of starting out on our primary, our, our pilot group with this at North Harney. So we're trying to recruit folks out of Harney Central High School who are either in the growing greatness program or think they want to teach. And we plan to have them tutoring over at North Harney Primary School later in the fall. And our R and Rs continue to reach out. They have to provide, uh, PD for the mentors as a ongoing part of our grant for that. And they are producing their own video newsletter every month. And I will tell you the name, it's God and Light Moments for Mentors. We are also, the R and Rs are conducting one-on-one licensure meetings with all the teachers who need coursework and testing to clear their license. That's quite a monumental task this time of year. We've about finished those. And we plan on having personnel meetings at the end of the month. We have, uh, shared and looked at our exit data. We are trying to take a, a, a long-term look at that. And we are reviewing that on a monthly ba- basis out here. And as you know, one of the primary reasons we still have for folks leaving the district is, uh, for salary. So there are lots of rumors out there that flood around about things, but primarily, and I know that both you and the commissioners are working hard to close that gap for our, our staff members. That's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
One question. Are we making any progress with regard to a sixth-grade ELA teacher at Coates Irwin Middle School?
I believe he had, help me, Ms. Taylor. I believe he had an international teacher that was coming and she could not get her final visa appointment, Ms. Gany. I, I don't believe she could get her final visa appointment. But I will, I will go back and check on that. I do think that, uh, I can't remember if like we let him, we do have a few more folks. Like we are, for the first time, international teachers can be hired in January. And so there, there is another chance for us to get more in January, which that's not the typical case, but we can now, so I will check on that in the morning. Yes, ma'am.
Something that, that I just thought about, and you very well may already be doing it, but whenever you said you were advertising on Indeed and you received multiple, um, applications from it, you know, if you haven't, um, Facebook advertising, it's relatively cheap for what you get. And, you know, I'm getting ready to start a advertising campaign for the airport targeting various general aviation airports up and down the, the coast, uh, or the East Coast. And doing that, you could target colleges with education programs and actually just, you know, hover, hover in that general area. And we can market, you know, our lower taxes, our lower cost of living, and, um, you know, the, the Harney County Schools environment, you know? So I would love to see something like that if we're not already doing it.
Yes, we have done in the past. I think one thing we're leaning heavily on Indeed, sometimes that brings out the most qualified, like they, the candidates sometimes are, are better qualified. And we kind of, so we might advertise for TAs to be honest. But anybody that doesn't qualify, like for those positions, then we push them out for custodial, uh, to custodial services or to maintenance if they qualify or for bus driver positions. Or occasionally, there'll be folks in there who qualify for teaching positions. So we really may advertise for one thing and then, but yes, we do both those. We do, thank you for that.
Any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Student Services Update, Mr. White.
Good evening, good evening, good evening, good evening. As we get started with our Student Support Services update, I want to thank, uh, Vice Chairman Abate and the members of the board for your support of our Student Services events and things that we've done so far throughout the year. Inside of your board packet, you'll find the district release reassignment reports through late September. Um, and here are a few, few quick updates from Student Services. The first is the winter graduation ceremony. We have a good problem, which is we probably have over about 300 graduates that are scheduled to participate in our winter graduation ceremony. That might cause us to have to move our ceremony from Triton to somewhere else. Um, and so we have reached out, um, to Campbell University, uh, for the potential of moving our services there. Um, so we're kind of waiting to see if we'll be able to do that and, and researching other vendors. Uh, I will keep you informed regarding that, but we are excited to have over 300 graduates potentially participating, um, in that winter ceremony. The district has hired Mr. Khalil Shaquille as the new district military liaison for Harney County Schools. Mr. Shaquille comes to us from Cumberland County Schools and is a dedicated Army veteran and accomplished professional with over 22 years of service as a school social worker and dropout prevention specialist in Cumberland County. He's a Fort Bragg Boxing Hall of Fame inductee and a former all-army boxer. He brings both discipline and heart to his work with students, especially those from military families. So he's been with us really about two weeks now, has hit the ground running. So we're excited to have him on our team. A comprehensive school coun- Views are helping Student Services elevate our counseling services as an important part of what we address as a school district. And so the goal with those audits as we go around to those schools is to ensure that every student in Harney County, regardless of school or grade level, receives the highest standard of support throughout their educational journey. I appreciate the Student Support Leadership Team for their work in visiting with our schools during this process. On Tuesday, September the 30th of 2025, our district hosted the annual CACRO College Fair at the Harney County Early College. It provided an outstanding opportunity for juniors and seniors and their families to explore post-secondary options and connect directly with college representatives. You'll hear more about that during Mrs. Farrell's report. But I did want to shout out Mrs. Hannah Matthews, Mrs. Tiffany McQueen, and Mrs. Allison Castle for their planning, and Dr. Jasmine Nixon and her staff for allowing us to hold the event at the Early College. It was great. Vice Chairman Abate, that concludes my Student Support Services report for this evening, sir, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. White. Are there any questions regarding Student Services? All right. Thank you again.
Mr. Abate, can I ask you that question? She will be here on 10:14.
I was mixed up about wrong person. One person's visa got denied, so our Coates Irwin teacher will be on 10:14.
10:14.
Yep.
I was thinking she was coming, so I was surprised.
I'm old, it's late.
Mr. Cox, Financial Services Report.
Thank you, Vice Chair Abate, members of the board. Um, as you are aware, there is a federal government shutdown right now. But what I do want to say is it does not impact our federal funding levels. What it does do, um, in some cases, it impacts our ability to access cash for those programs. So there are a few, uh, things that will be delayed based on that. But things such as Title I, we've been told we'll have access to the cash, which that's the largest category of our federal expenditures there. Just wanted to update you on that. Our Impact Aid survey is set to go out on October 17th. Mr. White just told you about Mr. Shaquille. We're throwing him into the fire as he's leading that process for us. Um, although Impact Aid Office is shut down as well. And there is uncertainty about, uh, whether Impact Aid funding will continue in the future. Guidance was sent out by the National Association of Federally Impacted Schools telling us or instructing school districts to continue to move forward, this, those surveys, in hopes that the funding will continue and we will, we'll be able to fill out our application, um, come January. And historically, we've averaged receiving about a million dollars, um, through the Impact Aid, uh, program each year. Um, a communication was sent out today to all employees reminding them of the open enrollment for the state health plan coverage for 2026 that will take place starting next Monday, October 13th, and will run through October 31st. Um, and lastly, we're working on finalizing our initial budget for fiscal year '26 along with the new teacher supplement scale and classified salary scale. Um, depending on we have them finalized, we may be able to bring them back to the October work session. If not, it will be the, uh, November, uh, board meeting. That concludes my report unless you have questions for me.
Doesn't slow down, does it?
It does not.
Any questions for Mr. Cox? All right. Thank you so much. Ms. Farrell, Public Information Office Update.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Abate, members of the board and community who's left. Good evening. September was National Attendance Awareness Month. And as you know, we talked about, um, our Why I Show Up campaign, an initiative designed to help students reflect on their why, why they come to school, why attendance matters, and how being present connects to their goals, relationship, and future. On the screen, you will see some of our Why I Show Up winners across the district. For elementary, first place, we have Katie Richardson from Northwest Harney Elementary School. Second place, Heidi Ramirez, North Harney Primary School. And third place, Ayanna Duke from Coates Elementary School. For middle school, we have first place Zachary Phillips from Coates Irwin Middle School. Second place, Lily Martin, Harney Central Middle School. Third place, Kylie Barfield from Dunn Middle School. And for our high school winners, first place, Haley, um, Camacho, I hope I'm saying that right, at Harney Central Early College Dunn Campus. Second place, Ava Topping, Harney Central Early College Ben Haven Campus. And third place goes to Ashley Van Hook and Ryan Sullivan, both, um, 11th and 10th graders at Western Harney High School. National Bullying Prevention and Learning Disabilities Month is in October. Um, this month, Harney County Schools is reinforcing our commitment to safe, inclusive learning environments where every student is known, valued, and supported. Tonight, you will see that our board and cabinet members are wearing blue to stand up against bullying. Blue and orange combination is the color there and in support of our students with learning disabilities. And that, my friends, is the blue and silver you may see, or gray. Thanks. So National Principals Month is also in October, and we are excited to recognize and celebrate the outstanding leadership that our principals provide every day in HCS. To highlight their hard work and dedication, we are featuring a daily principal spotlight on our district's social media channels throughout the month. So, um, please check that out, leave a positive comment, and show gratitude and thanks to our principals who lead our schools every day. Happy National Custodian Appreciation Day, which was celebrated October 2nd. We celebrate our hard-working custodians who keep our schools and facilities clean. From classrooms to hallways, gymnasiums to offices and everywhere in between, our custodians do it all, as you see on the pictures here. They're not just cleaning hallways, they are outside and all around. Congratulations to Rebecca Schaefer, um, recipient of this year's Excellent and Support Services Award. Rebecca has gone above and beyond in her role and was recognized by her department this year, demonstrating hard work, dedication, and care for our schools each and every day. Her outstanding service makes a difference to our student, staff, and community. So join me in celebrating Rebecca Schaefer and all of our well-deserved custodians across the district. The Carolinas Association of Collegiate Registars and Administration Officers College Fair. As you just heard, Mr. White talked about how excited we were about the job fair held on Tuesday. And I'm only showing this video to show you the attendance that came out for our high schoolers. Um, and it was wonderful. Um, this was held September 30th, and it was a wonderful opportunity for students and families to connect with college representatives. I'm seeing an SRO in there with his children. I'm seeing one of our principals in there with her child. So it was just a wonderful evening. In addition to this, we also offered a session for financial aid tips and college application writing tips. Honoring Deputy Johnson. The NC Home Builders Association Charitable, Charitable Foundation and New Home, Inc. hosted a special groundbreaking ceremony. This ceremony offer honored the late Harney County Deputy Sheriff Chris Johnson, who served our community as a school resource officer at Harney, at Highland Middle School. In the generous act of kindness, the home being built for Deputy Johnson's family is 100% charitable donation made possible through the Builders Honor First Responders Program. Special thanks to Harney Central High School, JROTC, led by Lieutenant Colonel Maurice McDougall, and the Harney Central High School Marching Band, directed by Mr. Ryan Godwin, for posting the colors and playing the national anthem. Look at that beautiful home, you guys. It was just a, a honor to be there and to see his family be gifted that. Congratulations to our HCA EOP Office Professional of the Year, Tracy Johnson. You'll see her in a minute. All right? Tracy serves as a payroll manager for Harney County Schools, where she leads with integrity, professionalism, and dedication. She has streamlined payroll operations across the district, ensuring accuracy and timeliness while providing support and training to her team and schools. Known for her strong work ethic, Tracy goes above and beyond to help her colleagues and is always willing to lend a helping hand. So shout out to Tracy. Today, you guys, is National- Today, you guys, is National Instructural Coach Appreciation Day. So we just went over those test scores and talking about the extra support. You guys, these ladies right here and gentlemen, they do it all. To our school and district instructional coaches, thank you for modeling great lessons, co-teaching, analyzing data, and empowering educators within the moment's support. Your partnership leads teachers' growth and students thrive every day. You guys, it's my bedtime. So make sure that you all thank one of our instructional coaches when you see them out in the schools, because they are in and out of our building every day. And Vice Chairman Abate, this concludes your favorite report, the public information report, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very, very much. Any questions or comments for Ms. Farrell? All right. Seeing that we're, it looks like we're saving all of our discussion items for our work session, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made and properly seconded. All those in favor, chairman votes aye?
Gany aye.
God for aye? Aye aye.
Motion carries. Onward to action items. Action item one, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board. Staff would like to recommend that we change the November the tenth, optional teacher work day to a telework teacher work day for certified and office-classified staff. This is already a teacher work day that our teacher assistants do not work, so nothing would change for them. There are a couple of reasons we'd like to make this recommendation. The first is that it would allow our folks to participate in our virtual Teach Hornet event without having to come into the building. Secondly, that Monday, since it falls between the weekend and Veterans Day on Tuesday, that would allow them to be able to participate remotely if they happen to be out of town to take advantage of that long weekend. Of course, they would still have the option to take the day off should they desire, but Ms. Jennifer Byrd and her team have some very exciting and informative sessions planned that we believe our folks will want to participate in. Therefore, I would recommend approval of the change from an optional teacher work day to an optional telework teacher work day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the calendar change as presented. Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, chairman votes aye?
Gany aye.
God for aye? Aye aye.
Motion carries. Action item two, review and consider approval of international teacher services through participate. Ms. Thompson.
Vice Chairman Abate, I recommend the approval of the international teacher services through participate twenty-five, twenty-six.
And this is going to be the same company that we're currently with?
Yes, sir.
And we're satisfied with the services we receive?
We are grateful for the services we receive, yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the international teacher services participate twenty-five, twenty-six. Initial term as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, chairman votes aye?
Gany aye.
God for aye? Aye aye.
Motion carries. Action item three, review and consider approval of international teacher services through participate relocation loans. Ms. Thompson.
Chairman Abate, members of the board, I recommend the approval of the international services through participate relocation loans for the twenty-five, twenty-six year.
Same system we've been doing, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the international teacher services through participate twenty-five through twenty-six. Initial term as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, chairman votes aye?
Gany aye.
God for aye? Aye aye.
Motion carries. Action item four, review and consider approval of additional extension to Duke Energy tolling agreement. Mr. Pearson.
Yes, sir. Members of the board, this is an extension of agreement we have with Duke in regards to the Northwest Hornet Pond, Retention Pond, that is in Duke Energy's easement. This gives us through middle of November to continue to work out a long-term solution. Essentially, this tolling agreement states that we will not, neither one of us will engage in legal action against the other while we sort out this longer-term solution, which we do have plans being made for that pond to be moved out of their easement zone.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the second amendment to the building agreement and to give the superintendent authority to approve and execute any future extension of the tolling agreement.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, chairman votes aye?
Gany aye.
God for aye? Aye aye.
The ayes have it, motion carries. Action item five, review and consider approval of Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund twenty-five, twenty-six grant application. Mr. Pearson again.
Yes, this is the item that Ms. Johnson pulled you all about because the application deadline was last Friday. We wanted to kind of have a formal vote. This is our, simply our application to the Needs-Based Lottery Grant Funding. We did apply this funding for CT High School. The construction of that would be completely dependent upon this funding, so we have submitting our application and then we hurry up and wait.
I believe this is an application that was also approved by our commissioners last week, if I'm not mistaken.
That is correct. Yeah, the commissioners and us had to approve it to submit that.
All right.
I move that we approve the Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund twenty-five through twenty-six grant application as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, chairman votes aye?
Gany aye.
God for aye? Aye aye.
Hearing no nay votes, the motion carries. Action item six, review and consider approval of SFLA Architects PA as the design services consultant for the new Buies Creek Elementary School and Highland High School. Mr. Pearson.
So this is our next two schools up, regardless of grant funding. These are the two that have made priority across our district, Highland High School and Buies Creek Elementary School. This is for approval of architecture services to begin designing those buildings so that we can then begin to get an estimate of cost on those buildings to then go to the commissioners for funding of those buildings. So this is kind of the starting of that construction process for those two schools.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the SFL Plus A Architects PA as the design services consultant for the new Buies Creek Elementary School and Highland High School as presented.
Second.
A motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion? I'll just add that we've been very happy with SFLA as our architects of record for previous projects, and I believe Mr. Matthews can attest to that, having worked with them on numerous occasions throughout the years, and we appreciate their commitment and the cooperation with us. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, chairman votes aye?
Gany aye.
God for aye? Aye aye.
Hearing no nay votes, the motion carries. I'll entertain a motion for closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, on eleven, A one, A three, and A six, to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel files under GS one fifteen C dash three two one, to consider matters relating to initial employment of individual employee and to consult the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege. Second.
A motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, chairman votes aye?
Gany aye.
God for aye? Aye aye.
Hearing no nay votes, we're now in closed session.
After a vote in closed session, we have returned to open session. Is there any further business before this board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion adjourned, Mr. Second.
Motion is made and properly second. All those in favor say aye. Ayes have it, we are adjourned.